Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our June 24th meeting of the Board. All members are present. We have just adjourned an executive session for bargaining on litigation positions for the public body as Chair declares 64 Wildwood Street and 333 Andover Street. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and once again, good evening to all of you. We'll start with transmitting of Treasury warrants. We have Treasury warrant 2450, 2450W, 2450T, 2450S, 2450MS, 2451, 2451W, 2451T, 2451S. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept all?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? The only discussion, and is that totals of $12,294,450.96 for the record. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. We have one approval of minutes, so that is from the meeting of June 10th, the entire meeting, June 10th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor. It is also unanimous, thank you. Which will bring us to our first appointment, which is with Mr. Shriera Patel on behalf of Will Sub LLC DBA Subway, request to obtain a common victual license. Not seeing that any individuals here just yet. Mr. Manager, do we have any indication that they may be here, not here?
I haven't heard from them.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Just like to echo Lil's comments and the Board's comments, I mean, I've gone to her many times, and it's just, it's a great night, and it's great that the kids can talk to various law enforcement officials, you know, and just be able to, you know, get a little education along the way of what they do, and, you know, what you guys do on a day-to-day basis.
Right, that's the best part of it, is the way they can interact on a, on a very, you know, nice level, so.
Yeah, so thanks to you and all the volunteers, the other officers, and the other agencies, I think, looking forward to it, it should be a great night.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with my colleagues, it's really, it's a showcase.
It is.
And it's really a community coming together to thank, you know, public safety, police, fire, everybody who's a part of that family in our community, and it's just, it's just a great, great night out for, for everyone. So thank you for continuing to put that on, and for the sponsors that you have too, as well, you know, thank, thank you to the sponsors.
Yeah, Chief, thank you very much, and this is just, and we've said this before, but this is just another example of the great work that you and your department, the men and women of the Police Department here, do to make sure that we have such a strong relationship with our Police Department, you know, unfortunately, that's not always the case in other places, and some of the stuff that we see on TV is just simply not the case here. We're really proud of the fact that we have such a great Police Department, we're really, we respect our Police Department here, and we're grateful for the work that you men and women do, so this is just another opportunity to say thank you, as Mr. Kyra said, and to strengthen that relationship between the community and the Police Department, so we're grateful that you're putting this on again, and all the other events that you do throughout the year, so we really appreciate, and we look forward to it very, very much. So if there's no objection, we would like to take Board to Consider item number seven out of order this evening.
And number eight.
And eight.
And number eight.
So, Mr. Chair, number seven is a Board to Consider request of the Police Chief Joseph Desmond to use Rotary Park for National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024.
So moved. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor. It is unanimous, thank you, number eight.
Number eight, Mr. Chair, the Board to Consider request of Police Chief Joseph Desmond to place promotional signs on town property for National Night Out on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024.
I'll make a motion, sorry.
Motion's been made in second, is there discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, all those in favor, it's unanimous also. Chief, thank you very much, and obviously, thank you for your work, efforts this week, I know it'll be, as you mentioned, yourself and the department will be out there and interacting with the community, and it'll be a lot of fun, and we appreciate the work that you'll do this week and in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, take care.
Right, look forward to it, thank you for being here.
Chief.
Sir.
What was it? Should we take six and take it out, or?
Well, I was just gonna turn to the manager and say, just confirm what I'm seeing, I'm still not seeing anyone here for our first appointment, Subway's request to obtain a common victual license, I'm also not seeing a 7:30 appointment, naturally, it is not 7:30 yet, we find ourselves in a peculiar situation, I wonder if it's appropriate to take up a few communications.
I think that would be.
If there's no objection, we'll go forward with our communications, and we'll wait on our 7:30 appointment to arrive.
Yep.
Yes, so number five, communications, the first communication is the inter-office memorandum from Public Works Director Jamie McGoldy regarding white goods CRT recycling cost survey and recommendations, so I wanted to bring that to the attention of the Board and raise some other information regarding the white goods in town. So, as I'm sure members of the Board who were, have been on the Board for a little while remember, the white goods in town are operated through Town Hall, various departments have had that in their, in their purview, for $10 for each sticker. That is a significant subsidy, as it costs the town more than $10 to actually process those white goods. In addition, mattresses are also $10 a sticker, we have specifically numbers on mattresses, it costs the town about $55 per mattress to recycle the mattresses, so the $10 sticker is being subsidized about $45 by the town for each mattress that we recycle, and given the legislation, we're required to recycle mattresses at this time, that came down from the legislature over the past few years, that we have discussed having this, this service taken on by our trash and recycling vendor, and in part, that would require a slight increase in the cost of the white good recycling, up to $25. Now, one of the reasons why Jamie believes that this is appropriate, and I agree with him, is based on the research that he's done of surrounding communities and the cost that they are charging for their, well, white goods and mattress recycling, and more importantly, he has evidence and firmly believes that Wilmington is actually taking in white goods and mattresses from out of town.
I believe that.
And so that, that's creating kind of a problem, because subsidy means one thing if you're subsidizing Wilmington residents, it means another thing if you're subsidizing the RICCA, or Burlington, or, or other town residents from our tax coffers, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So Jamie's looked at the data, spoken to other communities, believes that a $25 fee is the low end of what is kind of the average for our region, and also is convinced, based on the data he's received from other communities, that actually having a more representative price will in fact reduce the amount of white goods and mattresses that we see specifically from out of town, because there no longer is a benefit for people having their cousin in Wilmington put it on the side of the street, as opposed to doing it in their own town. So we, based on the latest information that we got from our current trash and recycling vendor, there would not be a loss of revenue to the town, they would still be forwarding on to the town $10 for each white good sticker that they sell, and retaining the extra $15 for their overage to handle the, the additional paperwork on their end. It is a significant drain on town resources right now at the $10 range, we are selling like 100 stickers a week, and so that's a lot of town time and effort for staff and departments that are otherwise running very lean, and have their own permits that they need to process, so I believe it's, based on Jamie's excellent work in looking at the, kind of the region, and the negotiations, the proposal that we got from Casella to have them take it on and still provide the same revenue to the town from those white goods, it is, makes a lot of sense to go ahead and pull the trigger on that.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions?
Mr. Chair, is this information available to public, or can we make it? Because I think this is really good information that Jamie put together, and I think it would be beneficial to the residents to see this, just the comparison and the detailed information, so they can really see in black and white, you know, the difference in how this $25 increase is warranted.
We can actually put that on the town's website.
That would be great, I think that would be beneficial for the town to be able to the residents to see this. It is, it's on there?
Under calendar, select board meeting, and then it's on the communications.
Okay. Put it on the DPW site where the.
That would probably be a good idea too, yeah, where the trash, thank you, I just, I just think if people ask, this just answers a lot of questions, I know for me, when we got this last week, that chart, and thank you to Jamie, this is great information, so.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of really good information in this.
Yeah, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West.
I was just wondering if we could get some additional information, you know, one of the things I'd be curious about, like you said, we're processing 100 tickets a week, to me, that sounds kind of high for white goods, because you're talking 52 weeks a year, 5,000, and then we only have 75 address, 7,500 or so addresses in the town, so I'm wondering, I guess a couple of things, one, if we can get some data to find out, you know, how many tickets are they selling?
That's.
It's in here.
That's, that's in the.
It's in here.
Okay.
It is.
And the other thing I'm wondering is, is that, is there any thoughts to, you know, saying, hey, you know, your first ticket or two is 10 bucks a year, but anything after that is such and such, because, you know, you get some seniors in town that, you know, they're throwing away a refrigerator that they've had for 20 years, you know, so I'm thinking, you know, if somebody's gonna re-appliance their house, you know, hey, that's, that's one thing, if somebody's gonna throw out one appliance every year or two, it's, it's kind of like, we're kind of penalizing them in some respects, as opposed to, you know, that family that's somehow ended up with multiple appliances on their yard during the year, just a, you know, just a thought, you know.
Sure, no, and I, I think that it's, it's fair to say that Jamie's very thoughtful about this, and I don't want folks to think about a $25 cost as being a penalty, when in fact, we're still subsidizing a significant amount of the, the cost of the, of the recycling of those items, it's just bringing it up to a more reasonable rate to kind of prevent the, the creep that we're getting, that I think Jamie's very convinced that we're getting from out of town, folks bringing their recycling here because of the disparity in the cost of recycling, if they're doing a full house renovation or something like that.
Right, no, I get that, but I'm just saying, I'm just trying to, you know, trying to weigh both ends, because you got people that, you know, like I said, they're throwing that one appliance away, and I get it, that most appliance companies will, if they're taking, if they're putting in the new refrigerator and taking out the old, they're probably charging $50 for an appliance company, I get that.
That's what I was gonna say, that's cheaper still.
So we are, I know we're providing, even at 25, we're providing a discount, but I just, you know, just kind of thinking about the, you know, some of the folks in towns that, you know, could be a little bit of a burden.
Thank you, any other thoughts, Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, I think I'd tell them to go to Lexington.
Where it's free, yes.
Mr. West makes a good point, are we supposed to be voting on this tonight? Because it says here that it's gonna be starting July 2024, is this something that the Board of Selectmen?
Well, that's a, that's a proposal.
It's not on the Board to Consider.
Correct, that's a, that's a proposal to be put into the trash contract for next year, we are contemplating starting it early, and having Casella do it for the, for, the negotiations for the trash contract, remember, will be for, to start in July of 2025, but we would want, ideally, we would, we would like Casella to take it on prior to that, so this would be, you know, providing the Board the.
Okay, how is it gonna be tracked? Because I didn't read that in here, so, not that I don't trust Casella to tell us that they received 100 when they could tell us 50, I mean, who's tracking that?
Yeah, so I mean, just like, things like tipping fees, anything else we deal with our trash contract, we'd have to make sure that it's in their contract that they're required to provide us with the, with the DPW, with the weekly numbers of tickets that they sell, and.
So we can't sell those numbers here and provide that to Casella, so that we track?
Well, I think the whole purpose is that because of the, of the burden of that number of sales in the, in the, in the Town Hall, it's a little bit overwhelming to the staff, and that's the.
But it's my understanding in reading this, that that burden will lessen when the price goes up, so.
That's true.
Yeah.
And, you know.
And then we can track it, and out of that $25, we're giving 15 to Casella?
To Casella.
And we're keeping the 10 that we normally charge anyway.
Right, so we, but without the burden on the staff to have to do it, so that would be the benefit to the town, is the.
With no tracking mechanism?
Well, no tracking mechanism, other than any other tracking mechanism we'd have within our trash and recycling contract, so there is a, most trash and recycling contracts have some sort of tipping fee based on the tonnage, and that's information that they have to provide to us for the tonnage, but there's not, they're not bringing, there's not a scale at Town Hall or a DPW where they come, we come in and weigh it, so there's, there's a, there's a requirement that they provide us with the information that they do, and, you know, that would be the, that would be the extent of the tracking mechanism.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Manager, would you please bring this feedback, these questions to Jamie, discuss them with the, with him, and then perhaps we could discuss this again in our next meeting?
Absolutely.
One other comment, please, is that, I'm just thinking that, you know, we should give the, you know, if we're gonna talk about this at our next meeting, which would be mid-July, with July 15th or thereabouts, and we're gonna say it's gonna be, take effect the following week or something like that, it'd be nice if there was some sort of a stretch that, you know, maybe after school starts or something like that, you know, starting September 1st or something like that, if we're gonna make a change, so if people have an opportunity, hey, I got that old fridge in my basement, you know, now's the time to get rid of it.
Sure, we could certainly give somebody, folks a runway of grandfathering it under the old rate, and then, and then, I believe the, the next meeting, I think it's July 15th.
Correct.
So we either started, you know, end of August, or, you know, beginning, you know, after Labor Day, something like that, would seem like a reasonable, just to put in the infrastructure at Casella and, and have it roll out of here would, would seem like a reasonable request, I agree.
Please.
Maybe there's a possible way that we, what we could do is, seniors, is discount out when they need a pickup, you know, instead of charging 20, we charge 15, as long as they, you know, we can verify that they are in a senior group or a low-income group. Just an idea.
I'm a senior, so I'd go for that.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Bringing stuff over my parents' house, all right, anybody else?
And there's the argument against it, right there.
There's a problem again, right?
One of the takeaways, the other takeaway is maybe it's time to open a mattress store here, 100 a week is quite a bit, okay, everybody comfortable with that, we're gonna bring it back and discuss that with Jamie, please, and we'll have further discussion.
Put on the agenda for July.
Before we take any action.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. I still don't see our first appointment here this evening, so we'll put that on hold, I do see that our third appointment has arrived, I would like to try to get us back on track, and so at this time, if they're prepared, I'd like to welcome Mr. Greg Young and the folks that he's with tonight for our third appointment, which is a property acquisition and permitting, Garden Homes Development regarding West Street Development Financing. Mr. Young, good evening, would you like to come forward, please, we can bring a few other chairs if you'd like, and if you don't mind introducing yourself and those who are with you this evening, I also wanted to mention that we have Valerie Gingrich, who's kind enough to stick around, to be here tonight, our Director of Planning and Conservation, good evening, Valerie, I also see Attorney Peterson, good evening to you.
Good evening, Chairman Bendel, members of the Board, Attorney Robert Peterson, Senior, for the applicant, Garden Homes.
Great.
With me this evening is Greg Young from Garden Homes, Attorney Peterson, Junior, and Attorney Catherine Adams from Schlesinger &amp; Bookbinder in Newton, she's assisting this applicant with a very similar process in Newton, and we just thought we would bring him along in case any technical questions arose.
Great, well, good evening to you, before we allow you to have your presentation, I would just want to turn it over to the Manager, perhaps, Mrs. Slagel, you could just let us know how we arrived at this moment.
Yes, so, and so for, for members of the Board and members of the public, we first spoke to Garden Homes, I believe it was last week, on Tuesday, at their request, in an effort to have a conversation about the financing of this already approved project, we, I think we had a presentation from Mr. Young that, to members of the staff and the Chair of the Board regarding their hope to move from the, the former financing method, mass housing, to possibly move into a LIP financing method, which require, does require a sign-off from the Chief Executive of the Town, which would be the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and so they, they made a presentation to, to folks, talked about the, their willingness to provide a couple of incentives to the town, for the town's willingness to accede to this change in financing, the largest one being a proposal to add an additional $200,000 in intersection improvement money, on, above and beyond the $125,000 in improvement money that was already in the underlying zoning board decision, they also proposed to bring forward that payment schedule, to accelerate the payment schedule of those intersection improvement monies, instead of that certificate of occupancy, they offered to, to make those payments at the time of building permit application, and so that would allow the town to have engineering done on the intersection prior to, in an effort to get it on the tip a little bit sooner, and they did also make the offer to remove the EV stations that were a little bit of a concern inside the, the structure to the exterior of the structure, and so after meeting and hearing out the proponents, the Chair and, and staff believed that this project was, or this financing change was something that should be presented to the entirety of the Board, so that kind of led us to today and why we have this on the schedule, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and with that, we'll turn it over to you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, before I begin, a couple of housekeeping items, I wanted to thank Town Manager Slagel and Assistant Town Manager O'Connell for meeting with us last week, it was a very informative meeting, and we thanked them for their time, I also met Greg probably a little over a week ago, and I've learned a boatload about 40B financing in the eight days that I've known Greg Young, secondly, I've been battling bronchitis and laryngitis, so if my voice fails, I'll switch out with the younger, I lost my voice for two days last week, and my wife told me it was the best two days she had of the week, so. Little bit about Garden Homes for the Board, they're established in 1954, they headquartered in New Jersey, although Greg was born and raised locally and currently lives in Melrose, they're privately held and composed of two housing divisions, multifamily and retail office, they're developers and owners, and they're currently active in development in nine states, they have an ever-growing presence in the Boston area, and the thing that I think it's important, and the thing that I was most impressed with when I met Greg Young, is their acquisitions are long-term acquisitions, they're not build and sell, they buy and hold, this is a rental property and they plan on keeping it, an overview of the West Street property in particular, they have the property under agreement to purchase, the project was approved last March, they're building what was proposed, and they are willing to fulfill all, all obligations of the existing 40B permit, the reason we're here this evening is they're seeking a switch for their financing only, they're not seeking to modify the permit, they're seeking to get your approval on how they're gonna obtain They're seeking to get your approval on how they're gonna obtain their financing for this property. When you do 40B financing, there's a 25% requirement that you use funds from the NEF or the New England Fund, which was established when the 40B provisions of the statute were enacted to generate business for local banks. The problem is, right now, the capital markets for lending is very unstable, and there's no NEF money available. These gentlemen searched for months to obtain NEF financing. They got one offer from one NEF lender, and quite frankly, it made building the project untenable. So, the simple answer is, there is no NEF money available to build any of these projects right now. It's just not out there. In order to switch from mass housing, which is the required financing agency on a 40B, you are allowed to switch to EOHLC, which is formerly known as DHCD. It's another state agency, so you're going from one state agency to the other. The problem is, not the problem is, but the issue is, when you switch from mass housing to EOHLC, it automatically becomes a LIP project or a local initiative project. As I indicated to you, Mr. Chairman, and to the Board, although this applicant has a longstanding, longstanding relationship with many NEF funders, they were unable to secure any, any NEF funding for this project. This company does have two other projects going now, one they just completed in Billerica, and one they just started in Newton, which is, was identical to this. There was no NEF funding available, and the city allowed the switch from the NEF funding to the EOHLC funding. As the Chairman indicated, the permit for this project required $50,000 in mitigation toward Lowell and West Street improvements, and I believe another $75,000 payment to the town for a total amount of payments in the amount of $125,000 payable at the completion of the project. This applicant is willing to increase the 75,000, the $50,000 payment to 250,000 and make it payable to the town upon the issuance of a building permit for this project. And I spoke to Greg today, and he also indicated a willingness to speak to Ms. Gingrich. If there are better places to put that money when the permit is issued, we'd be willing to go back to the Board of Appeals for a minor modification of the permit. One thing to keep in mind about the financing, it's kind of a quirky thing, but the, the NEF requirement of 25% only requires, only applies the permanent financing. So, in theory, they could pull a permit to build, but they have to have, under the mass housing rules, they have to have their permanent financing in place before they build, and that's where the snag with the NEF funding came up.
Thank you, Attorney Peterson. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Young, thank you. Questions or comments from the Board? Mr. DePaum.
Thank you. Thank you for looking at this project very closely. Start out with, any funding that would be turned over to the town, I would recommend that it stays at West and Lowell. That intersection, I know, going back 10 years, has been considered by the state as an F, a failing, failing intersection. We are right now creating a new intersection at Lowell and Woburn Street, which should start traffic flowing a lot better when, once it's open. The sad part about it is, is when they get down to West Street, we're gonna end up into a bottleneck again, and I believe that it would end up being a worse bottleneck than it is today. So, any funding that you are willing to give the town, I would strongly recommend that it, it stays on West and Lowell, Lowell Street. As far as the project's concerned, I understand that the charging stations were a big concern, and that you have decided that you will put them outside. I'll be honest with you, I wish the townhouses in the front of it on West Street were still there, because that made that project just so much more attractive. When would you be looking at putting shovels in the ground on this project?
Yeah, the, the hope would be at the end of the year, the beginning of next year. The project does not have construction documents yet, but if we have an affirmative vote from the Board, we would be, we'd be getting started with those right away. We're, we have spoken with the EOHLC, and they are supportive of the switch, so we're confident that we would, you know, get the approval from them. So, it's about a four, a four-month process to do the construction documents, and then probably another two months for a review by the Town Engineering Department for the, for the issuance of the building permit. So, we're prepared to get going right away.
So, just to make it clear, that you're requesting this for financial reasons, and there is no change to the construction project at all?
Correct, correct.
Thank you very much.
Mr. DePaum, I may also expound on Mr. Young's answer, that 250,000 being proposed as the donation, not, as the payment to the town upon the issuance of the permit, will get the town to a 25% design for that intersection, which would allow the town to get into the tip queue at Mass Highway for state roadway funding.
Thank you. I'm, that, like I said, the project's gonna stay the same. That's one thing that I've been concerned with because of that, that, and it is, it's a horrible intersection. And to be able to be, bring that up too, it's just gonna be more attractive to coming into the town and traffic flow. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DePaum. Mr. West?
Yes, hi, thank you. I agree with what Selectmen DePaum had to say about the intersection. When I was on the Board from 2002 to 2005, they were putting in the Regency Place condo complex, apartment complex, and at that time, they were saying that that's, that intersection was an F. And they said, well, there's not a lot we can do, because an F's an F. And, you know, and they, they compared it to a horse. They said, you know, hey, the, if the horse is dead, we can't do anything to resuscitate it. You know, my take was, is that, okay, what can you do to bring it to a D+ or a C-? So, the thing is, is that I'd like to, I agree that I'd like to see that $250,000 really be used, you know, to improve that intersection, and whatever grade it is today, whatever, however high we can raise it, it would be great, because, you know, again, that, that intersection, as we all know, is horrible. So, and, and the thing is, is that, now, you've got, it's, you've got the intersection, well, not the intersection, but you also got a left-hand turn to deal with also going on to West Street into Reading, so, I don't know if, is that, is the money gonna be used strictly for the intersection of West and Lowell? Or is that gonna go also for your left-hand turn? Probably, you're probably gonna put a light there, I'm, I'm assuming. I don't know if you guys thought about a lighter there at all, or no?
Leaving the project itself?
Yeah.
There's actually, Frank, not a significant amount of traffic that leaves those projects. Have you ever driven down Burlington Avenue in the morning at Metro? There were very, I mean, I drive that way to work every morning. There were very few cars that leave that project, even during rush hour, and it wouldn't necessitate a light. Valerie would know better than I, but I believe there are some improvements already proposed on the, on the West Street side coming out to Lowell Street, and I did permit the FedEx facility for Mr. Holland a few years back. He also made a substantial contribution to the redesign and the improvement of the West and Lowell Street intersection.
Yeah, 'cause I, again, you know, my issue is, is that I'd hate to see a set of lights there, is, is where I was going with that, because, I mean, A, we got enough subtle, sets of lights in the, lights in the town now, and I think that if to put anything there would screw up the intersection of West and Lowell over on Lowell Street, so. But, yeah, I, you know, if we can get that money to stay here on, on West and Lowell, that's, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both. You've answered my questions. I want to, you know, is the plan staying the same, the building, all that stuff. Same as my colleagues, that intersection, so I appreciate you, you know, I think this is a beneficial plan for both you and the town, and I appreciate you adding more money to the intersection, because it's well, it's, it's much needed, as we've all stated here. So, I just appreciate, you know, coming up with a, a plan that, you know, will help out the town and, and yourself. So, it's, it's kind of like a win-win, I think, but I agree, it's that intersection. So, thank you. I'm glad it's just a, you know, it's a good compromise.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Young, for being here this evening. A lot of discussion about the intersection. I noticed in the 2022 report of the mass housing comprehensive permit project that the intersection was addressed in here as well. Unless I'm reading it wrong, I'm not an engineer, but it seems like it's in Section 4 regarding the correction of the intersection. I know that the part of its own by MassDOT, so I'm sure that that's gonna be an issue going through that, that regulatory process. The, the town approved, back in a town meeting, 50, up to 50 units in that particular spot. Just to give a little brief history, and, and because Princeton Properties was delayed, it lay, left an opportunity for forced 40Bs to come in to the community. I think there's one down in Nichols, Nickel Street. I know you're probably not aware of that, and then there's this forced 40B that went to, I believe, I read like 158 units, then down, I think, to 132 units, because they couldn't fit the 158. So, they forced in that, that amount. And my definition of a LIP is one that's mutually agreed upon. You know, it starts, you know, months in advance, and it's discussed between the town and the developer and the attorneys, so that they come up with something that's beneficial for both the town and, and the developer, right? And we did something like that, or we did that at Princeton Properties, which is located in the North Wilmington area, where the developer got a Mass Works grant for a sewer project, I think, a little over $2 million. They proposed 121 units and went down to 108. They gave $250,000 towards a substation, and now they're offering 23 units to veterans. So, that, and they're still keeping that, you know, opportunity to develop it and to have, you know, make money on it, I guess you'd say. So, this is going to be a LIP agreement, which means that it's a friendly 40B. And quite frankly, I don't still see it as a friendly 40B. Nothing has changed. You, you're giving something to the intersection, which is already addressed in this particular book that I have here. The, I believe I read somewhere in here as well, that the stations, the electric stations for cars was supposed to be outside as well in, in the book. So, I was thinking, you know, the sewer lines is, is a concern. I don't know if that's something that you would consider going to, to, to Mass Works to, to get a grant for that. I, I have some issues. I, I understand that it's permanent. That seems to be the key word, that the, it's permanent, it can, it's gonna go up, it's gonna go up the way it is. I have some issues with the public safety. When I first saw the development, it didn't go, access didn't go around the entire property for fire and ambulance and police. It stopped at a certain point. That made me nervous. I don't know if it would make the residents nervous over there. And how, and maybe this is for Ms. Gingrich, is the affordable component the same with, so, it, whatever that threshold is, is it the same amount from the mass housing as it is with the, with the current?
That's correct. It's 25% of the units as affordable.
Sorry, Valerie, could you go to the microphone? Thank you very much.
Yes, that's correct. The percentage of affordable remains the same at 25%.
And does this, is this gonna affect, Valerie, we, you know, we're struggling with the MBTA housing component? Does this fall in that area?
This is a parcel that's in our MBTA Community Zoning District, so it is within that district, so they, if that district passes, they could continue with the 40B project, or they could choose to do the MBTA zoning. Those would be, that would be a new option for them.
So, then, the, these, the 132 apartments and the townhouses, would, that wouldn't count towards our MBTA?
The land area does count towards our MBTA threshold that we have to meet, yes. They would, the land area would count, the yield from that land area would count towards our, our district.
So, it counts. The, I, I guess another question that I have is, you're coming to the Board of Selectmen, right? So, we're, we're looked upon as we're approving this. Was there any consideration of going back to the Board of Appeals and amending your finance options to, to include your opportunity to get financing outside of local banking?
The regulations, Mr. Kaya, require that that change be brought before the Chief Executive Officer of the City of Town in which the project is to be located. So, this is, we're here because this is where we're supposed to be.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is that if you're not, if you didn't do the LIP and, and switch agencies, could you have gone, maybe for Valerie, again, could they have gone back to the, the Board of Appeals to amend their, their financing opportunities?
So, a LIP, a LIP project has to come to this Board, so-
I get it, but I'm not talking about a LIP. I'm talking about, could they have gone back to the Board of Appeals and amended their, their finance package, right? The, the Board of Appeals granted them on how to do that?
So, there's, there's two, there's a couple of options. One being going through what used to be DHCD, which is now HLC, with a LIP project like this, or you can go through mass housing, and that's the way that they permitted the project with the ZBA. So, I think they might actually have to go back to the ZBA to change the comprehensive permit that was approved to add in this option, but they also need to have it approved by this Board.
Now, this, I mean, this is the first time I'm seeing it, other than getting the package on Friday night. There was nothing in the package for us to read and look at, for documents, to make an informed decision. So, it's difficult for me, you know, to, to vote on this. I would rather have further discussion and, and see if there's more of a mutual agreement between the town and the developer, and see what, if there's any way to, to bring down the, the number of units to show more public safety concern around there to- Yeah, I, I, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kaya.
Mr. Chair, in response to Mr. Kaya, honestly, I think this property would have made a perfect LIP application when it was initially proposed. That didn't happen. For what reason? I don't know. I wasn't, I wasn't privy to that. I mean, at this point, the permit is what it is. It's not gonna change. And if you don't approve this, which would be in, within your purview, that permit's gonna hang out there until either the capital markets improve and somebody comes in and builds it, and is not required to offer the additional payment. And I believe, Kevin, the, the improvements you spoke of on West Street were those, I think, accepted by the original applicant, some accessway between the driveway of that property, Frank, which is what you referred to, and the intersection of West Street and Lowell Street. The money that these folks are offering is for a complete redesign of that intersection at Lowell and West. And for those of you who see that opportunity, I appreciate your, your foresight and your wisdom, so.
Are there any other questions, comments from the Board? Anything you'd like to add in closing?
I think I've covered it, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we do have an agenda item that we can take out of order, if there's no objection, which is item number nine. Mr. Slager.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this would be item number nine, a Board to Consider Authorizing the Select Board Chair to Sign a Local Initiative Program LIP Subject to Conditions. And I, because this is a bit of a challenging situation, I, I did draft a, a proposed motion if the Board did wanna-
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the Town Manager brings up a good point, subject to conditions. subject to conditions. We don't have anything in writing. Not that I wouldn't believe what you're gonna say, but in talking to our attorney before he left, he did make mention, I believe Ms. O'Connell was there, that you should have something in writing. So I'm wondering if we should table this until the next meeting, until we get that commitment in writing from the developer.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Town manager, Slager. I believe you could probably meet that requirement by making a condition of your approval.
So just for the full board to consider, I believe it is possible, if the board so wished, to make a motion that would be contingent upon subject to the execution of an MOU that was acceptable to both the town manager and town council, which included the additional payment of $200,000 for intersection improvements, an acceleration of all $325,000 in payments under both the MOU and the permit to be due with the issuance of the first building permit and the movement of the EV charging stations at the project to the exterior of the parking structure.
Now, Mr. Chair, to the town, you said 200,000. I thought you said 250,000.
An additional 200,000. The 50,000 is already in the permit.
Additional 200 for a total of 250 for the intersection and then 75 for pedestrian improvements. So that's why it was a total of 325,000, which was in there.
And Mr. Chairman, I can assure you that the MOI will not be an issue. These gentlemen need to move forward. They need to get their LIP application in. They can't get their financing without it. And I'm sure we could wrap it up in a very, very short period of time. They're willing to pay the money, so there is no issue.
And so just to be clear, so I have it. Correct me if I'm wrong. But if the board was to give a positive vote here this evening along the lines of what you just read, that would only allow me, as the current chair, to eventually sign off on this. And I wouldn't be signing off it and on it until I saw the MOU, which could be drafted after this evening if there was a positive vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think that I would probably, if there's a favorable vote here this evening, I would probably do the same thing any of you would do, that you would follow through on that and make sure that it was in writing before executing anything. That would be the charge given if that's the case.
Mr. Chair, just again, to Mr. Young and Mr. Peterson, I actually think that that area is a great location for an apartment complex. I think it's a little too big for my flavor. I think a LIP is, I see it a little bit differently than maybe you do. And I'm just not prepared to support it this evening until I see something in writing for that regard. Or if you wanna go back into negotiations, and certainly the town has some, or I have some concerns.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I'm just, I'm making the motion.
Oh, I was gonna do it. If you want to do it, you can do it.
Oh, whoever wants to make it, I just, I didn't receive a copy of that.
No, no, I just took it from Eric. I just had him. Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I would be seeking a motion to authorize the chair of the select board to sign the LIP with Garden Homes for the West Street project subject to the execution of the MOU, acceptable to both the town manager and town council, which includes the following. An additional payment of $200,000 to the town for intersection improvements above what was required in the granted permit. An acceleration of all $325,000 in payments under both the MOU and the permit to be due at the time of issuance of the first building permit for the project. And the movement of the EV charging stations at the project to the exterior of any parking structure.
Second for discussion.
Motion's been made by Mr. Selly, seconded by Mr. West.
I guess my question to you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if it should be due to Selectmen, Kira, or to the applicants. But if we don't vote on, if we vote to table this until a following meeting, I guess my question is is that what are we gaining or losing in that three or four week timeframe?
I can answer it from the applicant's perspective. He loses a month on his LIP application. And as far as going back to renegotiate the permit, that's really something we're not interested in, Frank.
Is there anything from either, from any of us here that we'd be looking for?
Further discussion?
Nope, no more.
I would just say that we're voting to give Greg the authorization to sign off, and he will, correct me if I'm wrong, but you'll make sure that everything's in line to the, in line with the motion before signing off. And if anything wasn't, then obviously you wouldn't sign.
Yeah, this, obviously, just like any of you would have done. I mean, if that's the wishes of the board, obviously, I will follow through with it. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes 4 to 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Wilmington.
Mr. Peterson, our town administrator will be in, our town manager will be in touch as regards to the MOU.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Take care. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, I'm just gonna do a quick check of the audience to see if our first appointment has made their way. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone here, but I don't see any individuals here for the request of subway. So we will move on forward. We are to our second communication. Mr. Slager.
Apologize, Mr. Chair.
No problem. A little out of order, so.
Yeah, so we took things out of order. Just need to find my communications. There we go. So the second communication, Mr. Chair and members of the select board, this is a communication from then temporary town manager, Louis Semaglia IV, to the, to the state regarding the acknowledgement of the increased estimated costs for the, for what is called the Wildwood Building Project, the school, the school building projects that's currently before the MSBA. The increased estimated costs are from 27.7 million to 215.2 million. And this was something that was required by the deadline in order for us to stay in the queue at the MSBA. So there's no votes or actions required on behalf of the board at this time. This is merely informative to let the board know that we did have to acknowledge those increased costs. Folks who've been following the School Building Committee may have heard these numbers before, but I wanted to make sure that all the board members heard it and that the public would pay attention to the board got to hear those numbers as well.
Questions or comments from the board?
I have one question. I'd like to know, from the Wildwood School Committee, when are you going to make your presentation on what you are going to want the town to build? And, well, that's basically it. Just wanna know when the presentation's gonna be brought.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, I think we were gonna mention it here at the, at the close here under important dates, but there is a meeting tomorrow night. The next Wildwood Building Committee meeting is tomorrow night. It is virtual, I believe, at 6:30. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
I also see that some of our colleagues from the School Committee and the Building Committee are here tonight. I know I'm gonna put you on the spot, but if you're inclined to chime in here, obviously, I want to extend you that courtesy. If you don't mind, just come into the microphone. Thank you, Vivian. If you don't mind, the microphone right there is queued up for the audience. And if you just don't mind, Vivian introducing yourself, that'd be great.
Not at all. Thank you, everyone. I'm Vivian Verbedian, the vice chair of the School Building Committee for the Wildwood School Project. And to answer your questions, sir, the presentation would be closer to the August timeline. Up until now, we have been going through our feasibility phase and entering into schematic design, where we've narrowed down the options into a little bit more of a tangible selection and gearing up towards a final selection in order to go to town, town vote and town meeting to present. And that we project to be closer to the end of August timeline.
So at the end of August, you should be making a presentation on what you're going to build?
Correct. Not necessarily what we're going to build, but what we're proposing as an option for the town to vote upon. Once approved by the town via vote, then it would enter into design development, construction development, documents, and then to construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Happy to answer.
I would just thank you for that, by the way, and thank you for being here. I just wanted to add that in our recent conversation with the manager, and kind of our hope was that we would be able to have the OPM come before us perhaps in July, if they're available, and just brief the board on what's going on. Obviously, all are welcome to listen in tomorrow night and attend the meeting virtually. But if you're unable to, I think it's, we're at a kind of a critical point. It would be beneficial to have the OPM come before us and to brief the entire board in July, if possible. So I wasn't gonna bring that up on live television tonight, but since the, here we are.
No, I think they're very eager to come and make a presentation. So I will convey the message in hopes that, coordinating for a July presentation to the select board. Thank you.
Great, yeah. And I know that Mr. Slager will be in touch with them and it's your intention to be there tomorrow night along with our assistant town managers, so.
Absolutely.
Again, that's 6:30. Correct me if I'm wrong. 6:30 virtually. The link is posted on our town website. And I think it's been sent out over social media as well, so hopefully, folks can tune in tomorrow night to get an update.
Any questions regarding the increase or the letter? No?
Not yet.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next memo, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Ragsdale. I see you, please, yes.
Just to let people know that, as you mentioned, David Ragsdale, as you mentioned that the School Building Committee will be meeting tomorrow night, also on July 23rd and August 20th. Those are all on Zoom to make it easier for people to attend, especially in the summer. There will also be a community forum on August 7th, so the day after National Night Out at 7:00 PM, which will also be on Zoom, so that will be a full community forum. And finally, we are going to have, the School Building Committee will also have a booth at the Town Common during the Fourth of July festivities. And so residents can also come over to the booth, you know, starting from, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday. I have to check the schedule. And where there will also be information and members of the School Building Committee available to answer questions. And just people who are more interested in learning more about the project can also come to the booth during the Fourth of July festivities.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, for those reminders. And I know that you have had a great discussion about it at your school committee meetings as well. And I think that it's important to make an obvious point that we're trying to have as many opportunities for folks to tune in to what's going on, given that it is summer, but we're trying to put out as many opportunities as possible. So thank you for bringing up those reminders. Anybody else I missed? Okay, all right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next communication.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next communication is from Green International Affiliates Incorporated to the select board regarding the current status of the proposal to replace the bridge over I-93 Lowell Street, the 129 Bridge. And it's, I think it's exciting to note where we are in that project. If folks had any questions about that, I did, we did get a very large voluminous set of plans that I immediately foisted onto the town engineer. We like to look at that stuff, so, but it's a good update on where that project is and when we can expect the next movements on it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that for the manager? Okay, I'm gonna continue to hold off on number six, if that's okay with folks, just in case they do come. The opportunity is still there for those folks, but we'll move on. We did cover number seven, number eight, and number nine. So, Mr. Slager, could you bring us to number 10, please, as I'm forcing you to shuffle through your...
I know, yeah. This is what happens when one's in order. I will say that Bev does an excellent job of giving me things in order.
Appreciate that.
This is me not having the ability to change on the fly. So yes, item number 10. This is a board to consider request from town clerk, Elizabeth Lawrenson, to improve in-person vote, or early voting schedule. I know that this is something that, in all likelihood, has come before the board before with the state election early voting schedule. And so the clerk's office would like to have early voting begin on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, and run through Friday, August 30th, 2024. So we're required to have those in-person early voting office hours during regular office hours during that timeframe.
Okay, would anybody like to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I mean, Miss, sorry. No, thanks. Mr. Chair, we're looking at board number 11. Board to consider signing a deed for ways accepted at the May 4th, 2024 Annual Town Meeting in Article 29, respectively, Green Meadow Drive. This is the quitclaim deed, accepting that particular roadway.
Anybody like to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. We have two meetings. You're already ready to jump ship?
Yeah, well, you know, you're doing so well. I thought you needed a promotion.
No, thanks.
Board to consider number 12. Board to consider signing town council's contract for fiscal year 2025. This is the FY25 contract for KP Law. I will not be messing that up again.
Yeah, you don't worry.
You said it right.
Until the next meeting.
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Item number 13. Board to consider scheduling training by town council. As part of our KP Law contract, they provide trainings. There have been several. If you see the highlighted item that was provided for everyone in the packet, these are the highlighted ones, the trainings that have already been provided by town council. And so this would be to authorize us to obtain additional trainings. I would be interested to know from the board if there's any of these trainings that they think would be... We obviously, the staff's obviously looked at it and have some thoughts, but I'd be interested if the board has some ideas about any trainings that they think would be on the list that they think would be appropriate.
And just so folks are clear, this would kind of be a two-step process, perhaps that we vote tonight what we're interested in and then we would schedule it. We're not actually picking a date here tonight.
Right, it's gonna be, we're gonna have to work with KP Law about their availability for training. So just so folks are clear, what we're voting on.
Anybody have any suggestions, recommendations, requests? Mr. West?
I was just curious, thank you. I was just curious what the staff wants, because it seems like this would be beneficial more to them, certainly to us, but more beneficial, I would say, to the staff.
Yeah, we've done both in the past. Thank you for that question. We've done both in the past. We've had trainings for officials and staff. We've had a training recently, I think, maybe a year or two ago, where it was just staff. So we've kind of, we've done both. So I think what they're offering, it's really whatever we decide, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, procurement and contracting is always, you know, kind of a good, even for folks who do it a lot, it's good to have a refresher on that every once in a while. You know, I've, just because of what I have done in my career, I always feel like it's good to help the boards writing sound decisions. So planning board, zoning board, and conservation commission decisions is always a good one. You know, we've got a lot of questions about unacceptable streets, so public and private ways.
Yeah.
That's something that's come up a lot. So, you know, I think there's some things that are very germane to issues that are in front of the town right now, that it would be good to have not just the staff, but also appropriate boards and volunteers, board members and commission members, to hear about these things members to hear about these things, because they're gonna get the questions, just like staff gets the questions on some of these issues.
Yeah, I'll just start off. I'll throw out my two cents here. I mean, I think that, you know, some of these obviously would be beneficial for our staff, and I don't want to suggest I know which ones they are. I would probably leave that up to you. But as far as where, from where I sit, I think it's always important that we can try to get some counsel from them on, you know, just how we can better run these meetings. I mean, there have been a lot of court cases that have changed, you know, how meetings are run in recent months. And so I think that that would be beneficial for us. I mean, anybody who's sat in this chair knows what I mean, that it's not always easy to do this, or any of these seats, quite frankly. And so sometimes if we can get some coaching, some professional development in that area, that would be beneficial for me. So that's kind of my feeling, because we want to make sure that we're operating efficiently, and we are, you know, representing this position the best we can. And there's no real handbook. When you get elected to this board, you're not given a handbook on what to do. You don't get a course on what to do.
Did they not give you the handbook?
I clearly missed it. But, you know, I think that anytime you can, you know, try to improve your craft, that would be beneficial. So I don't, you know, I don't necessarily see that as an option on here, but knowing KP Law, you know, they've been able to cater to some of our requests in the past. So that's my two cents, but obviously open to other suggestions.
I think any training is good training. But I do like the chair's suggestion on that. I think that we could always, you know, be brought up to the latest, you know, stuff. There's a lot. I'm sure we've all read different, you know, court cases and, you know, new legislation that's come down about these type of meetings. So I think that would be a really good idea.
Yeah, there's always there. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I was just gonna say, I just threw my handbook away. If I knew you didn't have it, I would have saved it.
Zach fall under white goods? Well, anybody else? Suggestions?
I agree with you. With the laws changing constantly regarding public meetings, I believe we should set something up with them to go over what is new regulation and what we can anticipate down the line.
And the other thing we could do is open it up to all boards and committees, right? I mean, they're all subject to the same rules. So it wouldn't just be for us, but, you know, if folks wanted to attend and they were on the Commission on Disabilities, or they were on any committee.
Yeah, FENCOM, Zoning Board, Planning Board, they all have to hear those same.
Beneficial in everything from, you know, how we set agendas, to, you know, to how we operate the meetings, to our public comment, to, you know, any ways we can improve things, public hearings. All these things I think would be beneficial, because, you know, like I said, there's no handbook here. So if we can get some training, that'd be great.
Maybe we can get them to write a handbook.
There is a handbook, by the way. I'm serious.
Maybe Kevin can write it, then.
Yeah, Kevin has the handbook.
Yeah, I think they even had a training for new selectmen out of the west part of the state. But we had an open meeting while we were, I love the guy, Mark Rich, gave the presentation that was supposed to be an hour that lasted five. But I'm just saying.
Definitely informative. It started on a Monday and ended on a Tuesday.
True.
Anybody else? Does that give you kind of some direction?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that maybe the procurement and contracting and the running, running a public meeting would be two things that we can ask for. And then, as long as they're up for those, that would be our, take the swings at those and see how, whether they can fit those into our schedule.
Great. I think we've televised those maybe at one point.
We should definitely record them.
Record it. Yeah, people could watch it.
And then mandatory watching for new board members and new mission members. I mean, I think that's, makes a lot of sense to.
They do have those. You're right. We did go to a conference a long, long time ago.
It was on a lake.
It was, yeah, it was somewhere out on a lake. It was the central part of the state. But it's not all the time.
The state, the state does have things for new select board members. The MMA does. They have the.
Then they have the MMA conference.
Yeah, MMA conference has a real, lots of good information. But I think, I like your idea, because I think this is something we can ask them to kind of, you know, they know the town, and they know the people that they're, the people on the boards that they've talked to and experienced, so they can tailor their, their training to the folks that they're talking to. It's different than kind of a MMA.
Yeah, full disclosure to the whole committee. I mean, one of the things that Erica made a suggestion about our agendas, and I hadn't even thought of in the time we were here, is that maybe going forward, that under appointments, that we put in parentheses there, that votes might be taken. You know, it's kind of been the practice of the board that sometimes we take a vote out of an appointment.
Right, right.
Sometimes we don't. Sometimes we refer to a board to consider later on, and sometimes we don't. And so, you know, and I thought that was a good suggestion, and something I didn't want to implement tonight right away without mentioning to you folks, but I think that that's the type of thing, you know, given your legal background, that could benefit us. And it's a small change, and perhaps it's more efficient. So those type of things were the, could be areas of improvement.
Little changes, big impact. Yep.
Makes me think of sometimes you feel like a nut and sometimes you're not.
Oh, that's right.
That's the theme tonight.
Yeah, I'm hot tonight.
All right. So.
Do you want a motion?
Giving you some direction there. With those ideas in mind, would anybody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
As described over the last five minutes?
As described with the, yes. I'll make a motion for the procurement and cue me.
And the running of open.
In running of open meeting, trainings by KP Law.
Great. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, we have number 14.
Yes, number 14, Mr. Chair, a board to consider a quest from Abdullah K. Alhazima. I apologize if I didn't get that correct, for Tony's ice cream to obtain a hawk and pedal license to sell ice cream.
Okay, is there a motion?
I just have.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second with discussion? I thought we already did this. Is this for a different driver? I'm just confused.
Yes, this is for, this is for the son.
Okay, the son. Okay. No, I see it right there. Okay. No issue. I was just, yeah.
But you caught that. That's.
See, I pay attention sometimes.
I'd like to see.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. It is unanimous. And I just want to give one more check of, see if anybody came from Subway. I don't see anyone. Still holding out hope. So that will, we'll hang on for that. Before we move to the next public comment, we do have a request for a short recess by one of the members. It will take a five-minute recess. Is there a motion for a recess?
Make a motion.
Motion's been made. Is there seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. Five-minute recess. All in favor? It's unanimous. We'll be back in five minutes.
I didn't raise my hand, but I realized it sounded good.
So it's 8:20, and we'll.
8:25. 8:25.
We'll call the meeting back to order at 8:25, and our next agenda item is public comments.
Mr. Chair, before we get to public comments, I don't, I don't know that we need a formal vote to revert back to the minutes. I meant to, meant to bring it up at the time, I don't know where my head was, but on page two of the minutes, under important dates, it says that the temporary town manager, Samaglia, reviewed the important dates, but I think it's actually town manager Slagle reviewed the important dates.
Good catch.
Well, you know, I read, I mean, I know we all read them.
Yeah, this is my, this is my first.
That was you, right?
It was me.
Yeah.
All right.
So can we make that correction?
I think we got it, yeah. One. Thank you for.
You'll get that corrected. Thank you very much for catching that. All right, anything else? We still don't have our first appointment. They got till the end of the meeting. How's that? Trying to be fair and save them a trip back, but can't guarantee it. All right, public comments.
Good evening. Is the microphone on?
I believe it is.
Um.
If you could just give us your name and address, sir.
Yeah, Kevin McDonald, everything's on record.
Thank you.
As I was listening to some of the speakers about the Wildwood Building Project, I couldn't help remember that Wilmington High School was sized for 940 students. The price of that was eight, $85 million. I asked a town meeting when that is going to be paid off, and I believe it was 2037. The amount of students in the pre-K are 170 students, so if you do the ratio, it's 940 students that Wilmington High School was sized for at $85 million versus $215 million for 170 students, and that raises alarms and concerns, and I would like somebody here to put the brakes on that project and have some public hearings. The pandemic is over, and you heard the gentleman from the school committee say that there's a public forum, but it's on Zoom, and I think that's inappropriate. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this building here was previously used as a school. It's going to be vacant, and it's, it's functioning now as a public building, and there's no reason why a building with playing fields that's already erected couldn't be used for pre-kindergarten. People's taxes were doubled with the high school, and when we look at an early education facility that's going to cost way more than double what the high school costs, there's something wrong with that picture, folks. Moving on to the next item, I know that you guys met an executive session and you can't discuss any details about those discussions. The only thing that I wanted was the docket number for that lawsuit, and I was wondering if town manager Slagle would be kind enough to give me the docket number on that?
I can, I can make that available to you, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. And also, I was wondering if you can elaborate for the benefit of the town.
Actually, take it, take that back. There doesn't, the docket number does not exist at this time for any of these.
So there, so.
Apologize for that.
Let me see if I got this right. You folks are meeting an executive session relative to litigation, which would have a docket number fought on, on record if there was a complaint filed. Is this pretty much preliminary negotiations to avoid a complaint and a lawsuit? Is that what this, this is about?
I, I think that you're exactly right, that we're probably not going to discuss any of the details other than what we have right on the agenda.
Okay, so there's definitely not a complaint and not a docket number. Is that correct?
Again, I don't want to compromise anything that we discussed, so I don't think I have anything other to offer than what's written on the agenda.
Okay, and do you have a total dollar amount for the warrants that were voted on tonight for the expenditures that were approved at this meeting?
We do. We mentioned it earlier, but I'm happy to repeat the number. The total number is $12,294,450.96.
And can you tell us what the amount was for just the Shawshank Tech expenditures?
I don't know that number.
You don't have, it's not segregated?
Doesn't appear so.
I'd recommend that maybe in the future that that gets segregated. And at a previous meeting, I had delivered to each selectman a copy of the town charter, and as I listened to you speak tonight about handbooks and that sort of thing, one of the handbooks that probably each selectman should have would be the inhabitants' bylaws, which would contain the town charter. And the previous meeting, I mentioned how there's a law in town that a town manager's contract cannot be signed for more than what was appropriated at town meeting. And I identified that the previous manager, Hull, had worked four months out of that fiscal year, which would have only left eight months of an appropriated salary amount, but yet the board signed a contract with Mr. Samaglia far in excess of that. And so, it's been quite a while since that meeting, and I was wondering what's going to be done about that.
I appreciate your comments, I just would send a friendly reminder that this is not a Q and A. This is simply an opportunity for the public to be heard. If you have a question, and you've had a couple, that we've been able to answer, and.
This is actually a legal matter, though. This is like a compliance with the town bylaws. And so, it's just a simple question, are you going to see that the town bylaws are complied with? And if so, what's going to happen with the fact that a contract was signed with somebody that's questionable as far as in compliance with the bylaws?
I will most certainly take your question under advisement.
I'm not looking for advisement, I'm just looking to see if you're going to comply with the bylaws. Are you gonna, are you gonna see that the bylaws are carried out?
I can assure you, I really appreciate your question.
I'm not looking for appreciation. I'm looking for the town, as they look upon this board, to get an answer as to whether or not this board, is it going to be in compliance with the law?
Well, one thing I can definitely tell you is that the good thing is, we have a phenomenal staff here, and every single day, residents come in or email or call and ask questions, and they are addressed by the appropriate person, and most of the time, we get them the answer.
If they're such phenomenal people, why can't you answer a simple question like this? It's not like an outrageous question where you need to be a rocket scientist to answer it.
Like I said, I appreciate the question, we'll take it under advisement.
Yeah. And last question, would you be able to tell us how many employees Mr. Samaglia hired when he was the temporary town manager?
We can look into that.
Would you have that answer next meeting?
We can look into it. I don't want to pigeonhole myself, but we'll definitely look into it.
You don't think that the people in town have a right to know that?
I think the people in town have a lot of good questions, and we're working hard to get all the answers for them.
Okay, the other question that I think should be addressed is, the town has an owner's project manager who is a consultant for the town of Wilmington on the town hall project, and I believe it's P3? Is that right, Mr. Kyra?
He's the, he's the OPM, yeah.
Okay. If the town has a consultant that we're paying a lot of money to for that town hall project, is there a particular reason why Mr. Hooper is a paid consultant for that project? It just seems questionable that a person that was on the town hall school administration building committee is now a paid consultant when we have a paid consultant and owner's project manager? Can you tell us what the dollar amount is that Mr. Hooper is contracted with, with the town? Does anybody here know that dollar amount? And if you don't know that dollar amount, I'll refresh your memory that Mr. Hooper was brought forward by, by the board to be a candidate to be the temporary town manager, but yet he backed out, and then Lou Samaglia came in, and then Mr. Hooper gets a big contract.
Close to history.
You don't think that that raises questions and concerns? Because it raises questions and concerns with me. And you're talking about phenomenal people that give us answers when we come before the town, and nobody here seems to be able to answer that question. So I'll direct it to Mr. Kyra. Mr. Kyra, I believe you're a member of that building committee, so you would be very much aware of who our consultants would be.
Mr. McDonald, I'm sorry.
Is there a particular reason why you can't give us the dollar amount that is contracted with Mr. Hooper between him and the town?
Mr. McDonald, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just want to remind you that if you could please direct any questions through the chair, that'd be appreciated.
I already did, and you failed to direct it to the person who was on the committee. And you don't have any answers, and you're refusing to answer the question, and you're stolen walling the people of the town.
Well, I would disagree with you on that respectfully. I am taking it under advisement.
Then don't stolen wall. Give us, give us some answers. Give us some answers.
We will most certainly take those questions under advisement.
Not looking for advice, advisement, or anything like that. The other thing I wanted to mention was that you signed a contract with KP Law, and I would just like to know, when a contract with town council has escalated, and I'm hearing information that they're not handling all the lawsuits that the town has, such as involving insurance companies and that sort of thing, why is their contract escalating if there are other private companies handling lawsuits for the town? Have you, have you had any discussions on that?
Thank you for your comments.
That's a question, not a comment.
I appreciate the comment. We are going to move on, so if you have any other questions.
Uh, no, that's about it. But I did ask Mr. Kyra the question. Are you refusing to allow another member that's voted in to answer a simple question?
He has the same courtesy that all my colleagues do. If he wants, chooses to do so, he can.
Would you like to answer the question, Mr. Kyra?
I'll look into it for you, Mr. McDonald. I don't know, I don't know if he's a consultant, I don't know what price he's getting or making, if he is or is not. I mean, I'll, I'll have to look into it for you.
Okay, I believe that there was a meeting last Thursday between all the head honchos relative to that project. Were you at that meeting?
I was not.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, have a good night. Announcements? Does anybody have any announcements? Mr. West?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I attended the Harden Tavern Day at the museum a couple of weeks ago. The event went swimmingly well, as far as that goes, and I would, considering that it started out in the pouring rain, which they were hoping for an outdoor event, you know, the, all of a sudden, the clouds opened up, and we had a lot of sunshine, a lot of people that came in. I know it was a, there was a local brewer there that had a beer tasting, and it seemed like, you know, they had, they had an officer there to make sure that everything was under control, and it was a great family event. So I just wanted to give kudos especially to Matt Beers, who's the curator of the tavern. So I think he did a phenomenal job planning it, and like I said, going from thinking of an outside event to scrunching it all as an indoor event, and then opening it back up once they, once we got blue sky out there. So great job to him and all the folks that participated.
Thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to wish, and again, I would imagine all of our board members are going to wish, the residents, you know, great 4th of July this week over at the town common. It's, as you can see, there's some tents starting up, and we're looking forward to a great event, great week, and it was nice that the chief came in tonight and talked about public safety during that event, so we want to make sure that, you know, it's his position to make sure that everything runs swimmingly. So we hope we have a great 4th, and wish my board members a great 4th, and we'll see each other on the 15th.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I absolutely want to, can't say it enough, thank the members of the 4th of July Committee for all the work that they've done and the work they're going to do this week, and we're really excited about it. I hope everybody will enjoy it. Again, thanks to our Public Safety, Police and Fire, DPW. Everybody will be making sure that it's such a wonderful event, it always is, so looking forward to it very much. Any other announcements? Okay, hearing none, move, is there any new business? Hearing none, Mr. Slagle, could you take us through important dates, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Important dates, through October 6th, we have the Farmers Market on the Town Common, Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting, on June 25th, tomorrow night, we're going to have the Wildwood School Building Committee meeting, 6:30, that is virtual. You can get the link on the town's website or on the school website. June 26th, the 4th of July festivities begin. If you have any questions, the number is 978-657-8081, or you can go to funonthefourth, all one word, dot com. They're happening at the Town Common. June 29th is Family Day at the Town Common, where the family fireworks are going to happen at 9:00 that evening. And on June 30th, we're going to have the spectacular fireworks happening at the Town Common. I have been told by people in the know that they're going to be particularly spectacular this year. Reminder to everyone that on July 4th, that is Independence Day. Everyone have a lovely 4th. Town offices will be closed on that day. Our next select board meeting is July 15th, here at Town Hall in Room 9 at 7:00 p.m. And as was earlier mentioned, on August 7th, there will be a public forum regarding the Wildwood School Project at 7:00 p.m. And that would also be virtual. You can get those links on the websites as well.
Great, thank you very much. Tonight's salute to service, tonight we salute Ensign Daniel Ballou Jr. of the United States Navy. Served from August of 1972 until June of 1974, and received the National Defense Service Medal. He's a, Mr. Ballou is a lifelong Wilmington resident, also served on the Board of Selectmen for a time, and tonight, we thank him for his service and we salute him. Thank you for that. And then two more items of business left, is their last call for the Subway folks. It doesn't look like they're going to be here.
It's called.
We will have to get in touch with them at a future date. And with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion?
It's been made and seconded. All those in favor, it is unanimous. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Everyone have a nice 4th.